All right, welcome all to our Academic Standards and Assessments Committee meeting. It is good to be back with you all again. What I want to do first is have the State Board of Education members on this committee introduce themselves, and then we can get going. And we'll start with you, Estela.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'm Estela Lopez, I'm the vice chair of the board. Oh my god, I can't get rid of my hair now.
It's beautiful.
Beautiful, yes. It's the opposite, the opposite way. Anyway, and I serve on this committee, and I think this is a very critical committee, and I think next year is going to be even more significant. So I'm delighted that the three of you wanted to participate and bring your expertise to this work. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Estela. Malia.
Hi, good afternoon. So, Malia Stevie, and I am entering into my fifth year on the board. Thrilled to be on this committee this year, and actually thrilled to see what the agenda items. So looking forward to jumping in and talking through all this with all of you.
Thank you. Awilda.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Awilda Riasco, and I'm a newbie, and I'm looking forward to working with each one of you and supporting the committee as much as I can.
And Martha.
Hello, everyone. My name is Martha Cruz. I'm also new to the board, having come on this winter. I come to this board and my business committee from the manufacturing background, from the business world, to fill a seat. So I'm here to learn and give my perspective, but also to serve as a connector in whatever ways I can to all the stakeholders, both in the business and manufacturing community. Because there's a great community in Connecticut, and they really want to help. And so I look forward to any opportunities that we can all work together.
Awesome. And again, I'm Eric Clemmons, a board member, and I have the honor of chairing this committee. What I want to do is now is hand it to Irene Parisi. So Irene, can you take us through the agenda?
Absolutely. I'll talk to you about the first item on the agenda. So again, my name is Irene Parisi, the Chief Academic Officer for the State Department of Education. And with me is Dr. Gladys Labas, who will be walking us through the PowerPoint presentation. The attached PowerPoint that you've received serves as a summary and an update of where we are with this important work on the African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Latino Course of Studies, which I think you know a lot about and have been a part of this work with CIRC. So what I will do is share my screen with the PowerPoint presentation, and Dr. Gladys Labas will present some of the details and update.
Thank you, Irene.
You are welcome. Ajit, if it's going to take me too long, I think I'm having issues. Maybe because I'm not the host, it's not letting me share.
Ah, yes.
I apologize. Yeah, Ajit, it won't let me share. I apologize. Perhaps, okay.
There we go. Okay, well, thank you so much. You know, this is so timely, this topic. And we already know in the research. And I'm glad the legislators moved on this quickly, because we know by the research that students need to see themselves in the curriculum. And that is one of the issues in terms of closing the, I'd like to call it more the opportunity gap. In order to address those issues, this is a format of addressing many of those issues that we see in schools. So, and that's what the research is telling us. So Public Act 19-19 is about African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Latino curriculum that will be implemented. The next... Let me just give you a little bit of a timeline. And of course, I'm the newbie on this, on the State Department, and I got going on this when this epidemic started. So I have been really catching up with all the aspects of the processes that have been taking place. So right now, on 121, the School Board of Ed to review and approve the course content for rigor, alignment, and curriculum. That is what we're pushing for for January 2021. Then by January 2021, submit descriptions of the course to the State Board of Education, and including reports development review, of course, to the General Assembly, because they also wanted to see this. We also met with state representatives to get out some clarification and some directions in regards to these timelines. And also by 7/21, LEAs may offer the course, may offer the course in grades 9 through 12. This is just high school. However, by 7/1/22, they shall, there's no option, will offer the course in grades 9 through 12. Okay, so the timelines and how we're going to deliver this. We have an advisory group that has been meeting, and you can see the timelines, the timetable there. We came up with a draft of course objective, both groups, the Black and African-American and the Latino-Puerto Rican group, came up with a draft course objectives. A draft scoping sequence was developed already June 5. We will be completing the course and report by September 30. And we will present on a meeting on November 20 on what we have developed, and submit revisions to the Connecticut State Department of Ed by December 18. And that was the timeline that we had. Also, I just want you to know, we just got a clarification for the legislators last week, because there were some discussions in the groups, in both, by some... Because there were like eight committees working on this. But they just finished their work, so now we're picking up on really developing the curriculum. But there was some groups that were thinking that the course needed to be combined, that both during the two semesters, they should be combined. But the state legislators just last week clarified very clearly that the course is going to be taught separately. One semester will be for Black, African-American, and the next semester will be for Latino-Puerto Rican history. It doesn't, and it just, and it would depend on which one goes first, depending on the districts. But this is the accomplishments that we have had. We have had focus groups to collect data. We have done research. We have had many committee meetings. We have developed content for the Puerto Rican Latino curriculum, also for the African-American Black curriculum. We have had joint meetings, the two of us together, so we could see where we come together and where we kind of are separated. And also, we have talked about infrastructure support committee meetings. How are we going to support a district in this process? The research that we have done in the evaluation, there were surveys conducted, and 350 responded, representing 62% of teachers from a variety of districts in all school sizes. 62% responded, and the readiness to request a comprehensive curriculum, which was great. We conducted focus groups, which were very interesting. Also, 32% of the students responded. Research and warehouse curriculum for some, from several other states. We have researched that also, to see what other states are doing. We gather out of many aspects from 17 districts that are already teaching some parts or some components of these courses. We wanted to see what they were doing right here in Connecticut. And the course syllabus and content development is using this information to guide their work. Sample themes that, from the focus group that came out, and this is directly from the respondents, include deeper studies, a subject course, teach beyond stereotypes, include inequities in American society, don't just teach victimization, teach resistance.
Yes, yes. This is Estela. I don't want to interrupt too much, but instead of resistant, can you use the word teach solutions or teach ways of moving forward, drive and resist. Resistant to me, it's more passive, more not action-oriented, so. Or it can be action-oriented, but in a different way. So, thank you.
What was the word you used, Estela?
Solutions. Or, you know, you can find a synergy for it. Again, it's the idea of, this is what has happened, how do we move forward? How do we change it? How do we make it better? Thank you.
Yeah, I will bring that up. They use resistance because through our history, and I could only know my, I only know the Puerto Rican history and much better, and you know that there has been very different aspects in our history that we resisted many times.
But you resisted to take it to the action level. You know, resistant for me is not the final, it's a process thing, so.
Resilience, or resilience, yeah.
So I agree with you, you know, victimization leads to resistance, but then that leads to, you know, some sort of solution.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. As we had, yeah, we had discussions on that, yeah. Question, okay? All right. We also wanted to make sure we included different Latin American countries. It's not just, because we, it's much more in-depth. It's, we have different Latino cultures in Connecticut and throughout the world. We want to include those. Teach the real history from different perspectives. That's what all the teachers, the students, they were all saying that. Not just from one perspective. Include the state, how African-Americans and Black contribute in Connecticut, how Puerto Ricans, Latinos have contributed to Connecticut. Talk about Connecticut. And emphasize on teaching that the differences are a strength. And I think that's where you were coming, Estela, not weaknesses, right? Yeah. And include popular culture. Include literature, music, art, because we have that. And, okay, so the next one. The themes, the big themes that educators, parents, and community, because we kind of put them more together here, is they want to see students identifying their racial identity and how it started and where we are now. Positive accomplishments. And from multiple perspectives. How to operationalize the challenges that we're still facing in professional learning. These are the big things that all came. Now, these are the themes from the Puerto Rican Content Development area. One of them is Blood and Sangre, focusing on the genocide, injustice, the killing and death of Puerto Ricans and Latinos. And the second is Sweat-Sudol, focuses on the social class and economic structure created to take advantage of Latinos and the wealth of each country. And the third, which is what we're saying, is defiance, fight, struggle, lucha, focusing on the effects based off of the blood and sweat experienced by people in countries to fight for a better condition. So those are the themes that we have developed, and we're now putting the curriculum together based on these things. And the African-American is autonomy, resistance, reform, and radical. And of course, they have a timeline also in this, and, but those is no different from ours. It's more, they're going to start with historical perspective, just like we are starting, and moving forward to the present. So the next step, where are we heading with all this? So June 5, we finalized the draft of Scoping Sequence Course outline. We met with CIRC. And then by June 30, we will identify a review panel that we will be working with CIRC to review this curriculum. June 30, we will have a draft of professional learning plan. We'll be meeting soon on this, because we want to make sure that the teachers are being provided effective professional learning in these curriculums. So, and I know some people had mentioned bringing in outside people to teach, like from the university level or from, and that will be good as speakers, but I would think that districts may have some problems with some, with unions and negotiations if they bring someone to take over for a teacher when they have staff already in place. And that was discussed. I'm bringing everything to the table that we have talked about. On June 30, we will have a draft for the publication and dissemination, and it will be in all types of format. And July 8, we will host an advisory group meeting with CIRC. And then July 24, the draft of the Unit of Studies of Content Development for both will be there. And August 21, draft course integration and assessment will be developed. Again, some of these dates may change a little, but we're trying to keep to them. Now, some concerns by the group. Again, if you could consider teacher preparation programs could support this type of work having at the university level, this type of course. Consider including in the work on the course workload in job descriptions. For example, if I'm going to look for a new teacher, maybe put something like this in the job description. Comprehensive, ongoing professional learning, that was critical for us. We don't want a drive-through type of one-time professional development. We want this to be consistent, continuous, and we want to have teachers training other teachers. So we like to develop a trainer of trainers within this process. Consider policy changes, development that include pedagogy, that include all our children. In other words, and I did this in my high school, where someone may be teaching something in another department, but it doesn't mean that other teachers cannot do the same in other areas, in other departments. So, here we go. Another suggestion the group thought is like looking at Gateway. They have a P-study certification program, a framework for undoing racism. They said, I have not seen it, but I heard that it was very good, and it aligns much with what we're doing, because a lot of these resources we could bring into the high school. Include CIRC's work regarding courageous conversation, again, bringing it into the high school speakers. Consider pursuing a certification to teach this course, even intention for K-12 curriculum. So if we expand this to a K-12, that I hope that we start looking into, that we should start looking into having someone with some, with a stronger background in this certification piece. That's, those are just comments, those are things that they were considering. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Labas, for sharing the update. We can certainly answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, I have comments. Eric, will you allow me to make my comments?
You go before me. Please do.
Excuse me, you know, here are my comments. This is being done at such a timely moment, that again, we had never anticipated last year when this was approved, how needed this would be. So, there are two or three things that I want to sort of suggest. One is, you don't have in there, you have an internal process for, which is, you know, very adequate and appropriate for the school setting. But I think you need to do more. I think you really need to think about a communication plan that includes parents, you know, and includes also, I've heard comments from some teachers that do not see the need to this. They, when it was first approved, not seeing the need to this. So why is this such a critical component? You know, and to parents also, why is this so important and critical? And Malia is a parent, so she can probably suggest better things than I can, because, you know, my daughters are out of school. But I do think you need a communication approach to this, to, you know, to educate people the significance of doing this. I think you also need to identify what, you know, we've been talking now in these very difficult times about allies. Who are your allies in terms of ensuring that people, there's buy-in in the schools, where 93% of the teachers are white? And that doesn't mean, that can mean multiple things. But who are the allies in terms of buying it about the significance of this course that is not a tokenism, that is a critical component of the education of all children? So to me, those are the two things that I want to bring to your, to the table, because I think they're significant pieces to make, ensure that this happens without opposition, and that it happens academically appropriately, also. Thank you.
Can I add something, please? I wanted to follow Estela's footsteps, if I may. Yes, I made some notes, and I'll just, I'll just give you some tidbits as to what I like to suggest also. You named Capital Community College, right? And I, can you elaborate on what that meant? What kind of collaboration was going to happen with Capital Community?
No, that was Gateway, Awilda. They mentioned Gateway, no Capital.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, Gateway, yes, thank you, thank you for correcting me. Gateway, what, can you tell me what the, what is the collaboration going to consist of with Gateway?
Well, we're going to have collaboration with every higher ed components in the state of Connecticut. Right now, on the committees, we have someone from Central, we have someone from Gateway, we have someone from UConn, we have someone from a different university, Southern, we have different universities. Because a lot of these universities have provided this, are providing these types of concepts in the curriculum. And so, and how we want to continue that communication is like, for example, if a high school needs to have a spokesperson, let's say they're doing a topic, and let's say someone at Central, this person has that expertise, bring them in as a speaker. And that's what they were talking about in the committee. You know, to have resources available to teachers in this curriculum.
Yes, thank you. You may want to, instead of identifying one community college, you may, you may leave it broad where it talks about different higher education settings, okay? I mean, that's just a suggestion, because I only saw Gateway down there. The other thing is, is that I'd like to suggest is that, in the, in the higher education settings, we have Africana and Puerto Rican, Latino, Caribbean centers that you may want to utilize for those positive role models for both of these communities to come in and talk about the different perspectives, from culture to language to, you know, whatever your curriculum is going to be designed. Because we all know that we have a lot of young students, and from high school to college, that it could become kind of a cross-cultural, right? Where we, where we exchange ideas and we learn from each other, especially from both, both communities. So you may want to also keep that in mind. And I, and the other thing is, is the most important thing is, is that I like the fact that, that I heard that this is the second year, Estela, is that what you said? That this is the second year? Or is this going to be the first time implementing it? And remember, I'm the newbie, so I'm trying to get myself acclimated to.
Yeah, Awilda, this was just approved last year by the legislature, so they're developing to implement it for the first time next year. That's why I said there has to be a communication plan to explain to parents why this is being done, and to, you know, ensure that teachers also support it, because when it was approved last year, and this is among us, it was somewhat controversial. Let me put it that way. I think today, in today's environment, it's such a critical course and such a welcome, you know, a thing that happened, but, you know, you still need to be able to communicate and to explain what it is, and to ensure that it is well-received and that there are allies there that support it.
Yes, and that we have also, whoever's going to teach this course has the rigorous background of, you know, of the different content areas, because not everybody can do the history of Puerto Rico versus South and Central America, right? Or Ghana versus African-American history. So therefore, you know, we've got to really pay close attention and be meticulous about who are those folks that are going to be teaching this curriculum, so that the students could get the best out of this experience. And Eric, thank you.
Anyone else? Malia?
I have a question. Can you, am I coming through okay? Let me just ask that. Okay. It's a slow connection on my end, so. A point of clarification, so the intention is that this would be, in terms of timeline of implementation, the intention is that it would be optional, is that right, in year 21, 22, and mandatory in 22, 23? Am I getting the academic years correct?
Yeah, according to the timeline, it will, it will be optional next, yeah, 2021.
So, yeah. So we, 2021 or 21, 22?
In the PowerPoint, because I have to go back to it. Do you have any?
I think it was 20, I think it was the second year, Malia, 20, I think it was 22, 23, where there was the word "shall," which was the operative in that, correct?
Thank you, yes, thank you, Eric.
You have two whole academic years until it's mandatory.
Right.
Right. All right, thanks. And then, in your, in your PowerPoint, Gladys, you had given some overviews of some additional themes for the Puerto Rican Studies portion. I'm assuming, or were there similar sorts of themes that had come out for, for the Black African-American Studies as well? I was just curious, that it was a little lighter on that description than...
Well, they had, they had these themes, and they had it more in terms of chronological, so with these themes. And so right now, our discussion is, how are we going to look at the curriculum through, is it through chronological or typically through these themes? So we're still having that discussion now, but I believe that the two groups agree on the themes. That's, and what you saw is what they have agreed to do. Now, the question right now, and we're having meetings as we, we're going to have another meeting tomorrow, is, going to look at it from a chronological perspective, a historical, chronological, or are we going to just take the themes and just bring them in? And so that is one of the discussions we're having as a committee, both, both groups together. We're having that. But no, they have more information. I just didn't have it with me to be able, this is what we presented to the whole group last time, to another group that we're presenting to at CIRC.
Great.
But thank you.
Okay, so my last, my last comment is just a comment, which is, I am thrilled to see this, and it sounds like it's just one, one course that is then, that a student can take either at any point during their high school career, is that right?
It's a one-credit course. And one semester, it will be Black African-Americans and then Latino-Puerto Rican. And we wanted it to be at the junior year for them to take it. And it's still, even though it must be offered, it's still in elective. And it's still, even though it must be offered, it's still in elective.
Uh, so two years from now, it's still, while, while basically it just requires that the school has it, but it's not required that a student takes it.
Exactly, right. It's not a graduation requirement at this time.
Yeah.
It is, but it, it'll be a full-year course and um, yes, the important thing is it'll be part of their program course of study guide offered to the students at the local level.
Exactly.
Yeah, um, well, I'll just reiterate, it makes me sad. Because I'd also like to find a time, right, in that we are, that we're not just looking at just one course, but that we are talking about a more inclusive curriculum across the board that tells the full and complete story of our American experience. Um, rather than just, just this one course that a student may or may not take at some point before they graduate. So that's my two cents.
If, if I may, I, I think the strong, the very strong curriculum that is being developed in this partnership is going to prove its weight once it gets into the hands of the teachers. And it, it's on the teachers and the district administrators to then bring it forward to their Board of Eds and say that this needs to be a graduation requirement. So I think the, the work that Dr. Labus is doing and with the CIRC team, the more that we can put in their hands and they start to realize the power of it and the students advocate for it, the teachers are advocating. Um, and certainly we can push in that direction, but it would be for that Board of Education to then say this has to be a graduation requirement.
For the love of process.
You got it, I know, I know, I'll come back to you. Alright, Martha, anything?
Oh, I'm actually really, Irene just addressed a lot of the points I was uh thinking uh about asking is the more tactical boots on the ground, how districts are going to um have to react to this. It's a very timely moment and it's a huge moment, so it's great. How would you support people to take it and run with it in the best way possible to see its success? Um, but also like touching on the whole graduation requirements discussion, how will students be able to fit it in to what they have to do if it is only in elective? And how do you guys perceive that happening?
Yeah, i- in terms of scheduling, and I did high school scheduling for thirty years, and this is where the training comes in. Um, and, and I've mentioned this at the committee, um, is that we need to really provide a strong professional development for leaders at school. Be, and see the need of this being offered because, as you well know, I could take any course. I don't care if it's elective or not, I, I, I could make a course disappear just the way I schedule it during the day. Um, let's be, you know, and, and, and we need to make sure that this course is not that it serves that diverse population in school, that people that, in other words, that if students are taking a bilingual class during period five, like the course, and if they wanted to take this course and it's, and it's offering junior year, let's not put it against a period five, move it in a different period, so more students will be able to take it. You see, I'm just giving you an example of, of just a, a small piece of the scheduling process. But also, the way we sell it at the school, as, of building administrators, as teachers, um, that's gonna be a major component. And I think maybe, I will, that you mentioned the teacher, you know, the teachers, especially in elective, if the kids know that this teacher is gonna bring them forward, that this is important to this, this teacher and that this is gonna be um uh providing them more background um in, in, in the culture, many of them will take it. And because they know the teacher, they know the teacher will do this. Uh, so there's the training again, professional development comes in to play major.
And, and I do think with the way the graduation requirements are now written, this course could actually be taken under a number of elective areas. So it can be in the, within the humanities, it's allowable probably, not so much as a language, it can't replace that, but it would be in the, the social studies. So I think, um, even though it sounds like a standalone course, I think there are some flexibilities within the graduation requirements and how they're written to give students more options to access the course, for sure.
Yeah, and we talked about that and that's it, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, eh, Gladys, eh, at the board level, we're not supposed to do the curriculum. So this is what I'm going to say to you is just an observation, okay? I have taught courses in Puerto Rico, both chronologically and uh, and then thematic. The thematic courses work better. That's all my, that's all I'm going to say. It was because you couldn't occasion from the beginning of what is present and don't take them along, the historical component. So from my perspective, that type of approach worked better. So I'm, I'm just leaving it like that and I will.
I'm with you. And I know this is being recorded.
Right, so it's an observation.
Thanks, Estella. Anything else, um, from anyone? So I, I will say, um.
Eric, Eric, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be sure, I promise you. Um, I really think, um, I just, I just want to uh thank Irene and Gladys because I really think that this is very important for this generation of, uh, Generation Z to understand the importance of the hi, their history, their identity, okay? Um, because as we all know, they're having challenges with who am I? You know, am I, am I this, am I that? And um, you know, in growing up in two cultures, this was the best thing that happened to me. We were able to speak the language, carry our culture, pass it on to our children with pride. Um, so therefore, I really commend you because it, it was needed, it was needed a long time ago. And um, and I, and I look forward um that the institutions will support you, the higher education institutions, so count, please count on them, okay?
I will, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Certainly the work, there's a lot of work that has been done that predates both of us. And I can tell you from being at the district level when the statute came through, we were so grateful for this because this is, this was what we needed at the local level. And um, it replaces a lot of narrow-minded ways of creating courses of just about social justice. This statute really opened it up in such a great way for districts to really think differently, so. And I, I think the important thing is behind the legislature is the curriculum, that's the big P. So the work that Gladys is doing, Dr. Labus is doing with the team in CIRC is so critical to move this at the local level. So I appreciate what you're saying, but I really can't take any credit for it. But we're, we're on the team now to, to continue moving it forward, so thank you.
And I just want to lastly say that I understand what Malia is saying about it's not required. Well, yeah, and I know we could have pushed to make the legislation uh had to negotiate a little to get this through. And uh, it's like when we wrote the bilingual law back in nineteen seventy-seven, we wanted to have it look differently. But guess what? If we wanted to get it passed, we had to do certain negotiate, and that's what happened. And um, so, yeah, and eventually, we're gonna keep pushing, uh, see if we could get this as a requirement. And it may, you know, it may be happening sooner than later.
Thank you, um, Dr. Labus. Well, I, I wanted to say really quickly, I, I think, one, very much what Estella was saying, that this is an extraordinary time and to be central to this conversation and having the responsibilities as a board member, given what is going on, especially this conversation, to me is, is quite an honor and, and um, a huge responsibility as well. Um, secondly, I think what I didn't see in there that I would love to see explicitly was the idea of beauty and dignity. Um, a lot of what was delivered or going to be delivered to the young people um as it relates to um Puerto Rican history and, and African American history, it sounds really about defiance and, and, and discourse to me. Um, but there are times of peace, right, and, and, and there are, there is beauty in all of these things, there is dignity in all of these things that was not, I did not learn that about my, my people while in school. Right? Beauty was defined very differently to me, right, and was, was, was delivered very differently. And I think if we can think about that, um, and think about it explicitly, uh, I think that I would be happy with that. And also, I fall on the side of Malia, but I don't want to belabor this. I, I think revolutionary ideas, as this has been touted, are only revolutionary when there's revolutionary action behind the idea. And I, I feel like I think it being an elective and kind of optional is, is a little problematic for me, right, given the saturation of, of um European thinking that, that, that countless kids have gotten, myself included, and a lot before me. And so the, the fact that we're bringing this on to the stage as an option um is a little bit problematic for me, but I know the way it's presented and the times we are in that I think kids and teachers and community will get behind it. And, and, and um, although it will be an option, it won't feel like one, I'm sure. But I, I'm just very grateful to be within this conversation um as this goes forward. So thank you, thank you all. We can move on, is that, please, Irene?
I was just saying thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so are we ready to move to the next item?
We are, yeah.
Okay, great. So let me uh pull up that PowerPoint. The, the next item, and maybe I'll say a couple of words, uh, just preface this. The next item has to do with school and district accountability, a complete kind of mind shift here. Um, so what we're bringing to you is, is not a solution as much as just an update on where things stand as it pertains to accountability and, and assessment in light of the COVID-nineteen uh pandemic and the impact that it is having for the year that we're just wrapping up, the school year we're wrapping up, which is nineteen twenty. But also impact for uh school year twenty-twenty-one. So, and, and maybe even a, a little bit beyond, because when you, when you take away the assessment for one year, there are downstream impacts as a result of it. So uh, let me, let me bring up the PowerPoint, and because there are some newer board members, I'm just gonna take a few minutes to just refresh what our school and district accountability model actually does uh at a very high level. I mean, there is so much detail in here uh that frankly, uh, when Renee uh Savoy, who's on this call, Danielle Busquet, who's on this call, and, and myself, when we come back to these topics, we have to take fifteen minutes just grounding ourselves because there's just a lot of detail. So I am not going to get you down to that level at all, but, but just give you a high level just so that we have a sense of what we're talking about. Uh, so give me a moment while I share my screen. I sent you this PowerPoint um in a PDF format and in here is a link to a YouTube video as well. So if you just want to watch a two-minute video, if you're, if you aren't sick of my voice after this thing and you still want to hear some more, you can get that quick overview. Um, I'm briefly going to review the indicators in the system. Uh, some of the system features and the resources we provide, and also some lessons we already have learned in terms of promising practices. And the types of transformations this accountability system is uh fostering. And then I'll end with a few slides on the COVID-nineteen implications. The system is a multiple measures system, uh somewhat like a balanced scorecard, if you're familiar with that terminology, where it's looking at multiple indicators of uh student participation and student success. So it looks at academic achievement, uh which is really just how did kids do in a year? It looks at academic growth, which is the change of students, the same student from one year to the next, where we're not just looking at which kids you have, but really, how have you grown the kids that you have? And that element, academic growth, is a huge part of our accountability system and actually garners the greatest number of points in the system. Um, we look at participation rate because we want to make sure kids are being tested. There are no points for it, but there are some um decision rules that are applied. We look at chronic absenteeism, which is the students who are missing uh at least ten percent of their academic days, uh of their school days in, in a given year. We look at college and career readiness in a couple of ways. We look at our students taking rigorous courses, which is indicator five. And then we look to see our students meeting benchmark on exams, that's indicator six. We have three ways of looking at graduation. We look at whether students are on track in ninth grade, whether they're graduating on time, which is indicator eight, the four-year graduation rate. And then uh, we also look at a six-year graduation rate, which is for students who we call are high needs, which are really students uh from low-income families, English learners, or students with disabilities. We, we put them in a group that we call high needs uh so that we have enough N sizes when we look at uh down to the school level and even to the grade level when we do reporting of these data. We look at whether students are entering post-secondary after they graduate from high school. Um, and then we also look to see whether, uh, how students are doing on our physical fitness assessment and whether they're participating in arts courses. So it really tries to take a holistic view of school and district performance. You'll notice that some of these indicators have an H next to them, which basically uh reflects the fact that uh those schools are actually receiving additional points in the system. Uh, separate points for students uh who are identified as high needs. Um, and that's actually a huge component of our system. This chart really just visually illustrates that the red part, which is the uh, the academic growth for elementary and middle schools, that's actually the biggest component of their uh scorecard. We don't have growth for high schools because we don't administer academic assessments in the early, in the uh annually in those grades. Uh, and, and we could also argue that once we get to high school, we really, the, the, the focus of education broadens and we, actually, many of our indicators do focus on, on high school. Uh, some of the features of the system, and I'm going to go through this quickly, just in the interest of time and really more to open up for your questions and discussion. Um, we have ultimate targets for every indicator, so in this case, it's academic achievement. And points are earned on a sliding scale, so in, in vast majority of the cases, you know, they're not all or nothing in terms of how a district earns points. They're actually earned on a sliding scale, so the closer that they are to their ultimate target on a particular indicator, the more points they get. And we roll up actually, and this is an example of a particular district's scorecard. So you'll see that there's all these different indicators that are broken out uh into all students, high needs, et cetera. And, and every one of them earns points for the school or district. And then there is ultimately an overall score that's generated, that's called the Accountability Index. And uh, you can think of it like a GPA. And if you go to EdSite, our data portal, and look in the report cards, you'll see a dial that looks like this, that basically tells you how the um, how the school or district is doing on that overall measure. Now again, it's the overall measure because it's like a GPA, it's really made up of all the ingredients that go into it. So the overall number is only useful as a starting point, you really need to get into the individual indicators to see strengths and challenges. And the overall um uh Accountability Index is like a zero to a hundred scale. Um, and about thirteen percent of our schools last year had an Accountability Index that was eighty-five or greater. That's kind of our benchmark for what we expect, where we expect schools to be, so we still have a long way to go in terms of uh getting all our schools to, to high levels of performance, overall performance. And just so you know that this Accountability Index is used uh for, for some uh important things. We use it to break schools into categories, we use it to identify alliance districts, we use it to identify some of our high support schools, but we also use it to identify schools of distinction, which are schools we recognize. Um, so what are some other features of the system? It has a, a way it categorizes schools into one through five. Categories four and five are the schools, schools that need support from the state. Uh, uh, one subset of those schools is called turnaround schools or comprehensive support schools. And we have thirty-five of those schools currently receiving state support. And then there are focus schools uh which uh typically have consistent low growth. That academic growth measure that I spoke about, focus schools have consistently among the lowest growth for their high-needs students in a particular subject, ELA, uh, English Language Arts or Mathematics. So if a school three years in a row is showing among the lowest uh growth in the state, then those schools get identified as focus schools. And uh, we currently have about thirty schools that we're working with. Um, we, I mentioned participation rate. Um, there, we also look at achievement gap and gap and graduation rate. If any of those uh factors are present in a school that otherwise would have been categorized as one or two, that school actually gets dropped a category. They might grow from one to two or two to three. And I also mentioned schools of distinction. I think the point I'll make here is that we have lots of schools in in alliance districts who we recognize every year as some of them are high-performance, but many of them are high-growth schools. So they might not have some of the highest achieving students, but they are able to grow whoever they get every year, and they're among the highest growers in the state. So that's been telling for us. We've used that information not only to recognize those schools through our accountability model, but also identify several of those schools for blue ribbon distinction over the years. We have a ton of resources. I'm not going to go into each of these. We have student-level data that we provide through EdSite Secure, which is an analytics tool that's available to secure users in districts. We also have a comprehensive guide that's referenced here, which goes indicator by indicator and provides a whole wealth of resources for districts on how to improve their current current status on any particular measure. So if they want to improve academic achievement or chronic absence or college and career readiness or on track to high school graduation or post-secondary entrance, there is a there's explanations about how those indicators are calculated, but then there's a ton of resources available to them. We've recently focused on FAFSA completion as well, and student-level information is going down to the school level on FAFSA completion. And we also provide interim assessments to 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 districts at no cost. These are aligned, high-quality interim assessments that are available to districts as well. So what have we learned? We've learned a lot of things and showcased several of those lessons learned in in publications that we have put out. We have done newsletters, we have held forums where we have had schools and districts come and talk about what they're doing. And of course, we have the Learn Together, Grow Together system as well. And in a nutshell, some of the things we have learned are, you know, implement standards with fidelity. It's key. You can't cheat on the standards. And, you know, sometimes these benchmark assessments, these commercial assessments may actually muddle the picture. And we provided our robust block assessments, really, to provide more actionable information for teachers. When assessment is close to curriculum and to the teaching, the information is actionable for teachers. We have learned that interventionists in many of these school districts have interventionists and support personnel. It's important to keep those individuals in the professional learning mix. Sometimes it's the professional learning is focused for the teachers, and interventionists are forgotten. We've learned that districts, some of our high-growth districts tend to focus on interventionists. Protecting that professional learning time is huge. And coaches are several examples where we've seen the effective use of coaches to support the improvement of classroom instruction. Teaching is a is a is a craft. It's an art. There is a science to it, but there's also an art aspect to it. And and when coaches are used strategically, the the teachers really can reflect on their own practice and improve. We've also learned that it's important to focus on the little data. It's not just about big data, big survey assessments, state assessments, and standardized assessments. It's really about the day-to-day stuff that students do and that interaction between students and teachers. We've learned that that actually has the power to turn this around. We are seeing a lot of examples, especially in middle school, of student ownership, not just of the learning, but also of the assessment itself. We've we've heard examples of how students actually said, you know what? When we're taking the smarter balanced assessment, why couldn't we be in a different room than where we're going to? We'd feel a lot more comfortable if we were doing it in a in a in a different space or at a different time or, you know, it it and and students have pointed out and teachers actually have pointed out how some of those benchmark assessments that they use, those assessments actually are structured and administered in very different ways from some of our state assessments. And they actually send the wrong message. One simple example is being timed. Our state assessment is not timed. It's an untimed assessment that really, except for the SAT at the high school level, the smarter balanced assessments and our science assessments are not timed. They're really not designed to put that kind of time pressure on kids, allow them to sort of demonstrate their knowledge and assess and achievement in a in a less stressful environment. They can pause the test, come back another day and pick up where they left off. Lots of flexibilities that some of the other commercial assessments don't provide. So it's important to sort of so teachers have kind of figured those types of things out and how they might be sending mixed messages. And again, the 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 fact that, you know, leaders, the role of leaders and and them instilling the belief in our teachers and our students that everybody can succeed at challenging work. And of course, we the 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 positive climate and the trust. It it's not just between teachers and students, but also among them as being key. All right. So so what are some of the implications of what happened in in COVID-19 pandemic? So the first thing that happened was when COVID happened in mid-March, as one after another, the states started realizing that schools were gonna be canceling in-person classes and going to remote learning, it became clear that it would really not be a fair assessment or there really wasn't even a way to administer this assessment if kids weren't in school or that it would even be a fair measure. So the US Department of Ed basically allowed a way for all states to seek a waiver, and it was really a checklist waiver, which made it super streamlined so that we did not have to administer any state academic assessments. And consequently, we would not be administering or or delivering any accountability system. So all the accountability system that I talked about just now, there will be no assessment and no reporting on as a whole on the accountability system for 1920. We might report on some indicators, but the system as a whole, we're not going to be able to do a report for based on the 2019-20 data. So it's like a big, huge gap year for us. So what happens in 2021, right? So so that so 2020 is 1920 is done. We're we're moving into the school year 2021. But it's not coming back to we're not just gonna come right back to everything the way things were, and everything is gonna be just as it was prior to COVID. There are still there's a lot of talk of blended learning, and some challenges are gonna, you know, we're still trying to deal with device access issues, connectivity issues. We know that some of those things are disproportionately prevalent in some of our alliance districts, especially our opportunity districts, which are our 10 lowest-performing districts. So there are clearly challenges that we're still working on. So even learning in 2021 is 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 potentially going to be impacted as well. So academic achievement is is obviously at the end of 21. It it has has some questions. Now, academic growth, which is indicator two, is really not possible in a formal way, because we don't have a baseline measure in 1920. So not only do we have no growth in 1920, we don't have growth even in 2021, because there's not a way to do 20 to 21 growth. The EL assessment for English learners was administered just before COVID ended in 1920. And their next assessment is scheduled to be assessed administered in winter of 21. But their learning has been impacted because of COVID. So that's something where 2021 is impacted. Chronic absenteeism, where, you know, for 1920, we we are basically collecting attendance information as of when, as of mid-March, really, only for those in-person days. But we're not sure what 21 is gonna bring, 2021. So we've got to figure out what does it mean to be an attendance? What if a parent wants to keep their child home because of some health situation, even if vast majority of students are in person? And the school is providing a distance learning option for that child, for that student? How do we deal with the definition of attendance for chronic absence? So there's stuff to be worked out there. One of our indicators on benchmark attainment, number six. We canceled the SAT this year. That's a big part of that indicator. It includes other indicators as well, other assessments as well, like ACT. I know the AP was administered, but it was administered remotely. Access issues might play a part there. IB, which is also part of that indicator, canceled their exams. So and and we're trying to make up for that, but that indicator is impacted for 2021. And then you have indicator 10, which is in this economic climate generally, you know, you tend to see less historically, you tend to see less participation in post-secondary. So that becomes a an issue to 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 consider for 2021. So when we think of our overall Accountability Index, which is our summative sort of rating, our GPA-type score, you know, we won't have growth indicator 2A through 2D, which is a big part of that index. So that is impacting that overall score. Plus, the other indicators are impacted by some of these factors. So lots, a lot of moving parts in here when it comes to 2021, and we feel like that's impacted as well. So we think that this will have implications for us for identifying the next round of schools for comprehensive support or turnaround, that we'll have to push that back at least a year. It was originally scheduled to be fall of 21, but now we might have to push it back to fall of 22 for the new round of schools. It also has implications for our focus schools, because we're gonna miss two years of growth. That gets pushed back to fall of 23. So a lot of moving parts with this stuff, which the states are still in conversations with the US Department of Ed about how to manage accountability for 2021 and how do all these pieces play in? We're doing some creative thinking here. So we are actually using some statistical models to try to predict what students would have scored on their smarter balanced assessment. This would not be for a formal accountability purpose, because predictions always have some level of error. We can do a good job with it and use it for informational purposes, but it really isn't built to support very high stakes decision-making like school and district accountability. So but we're trying to do that so that maybe give some informational value to to districts. We're trying to provide the SAT for students who missed it. The the juniors who missed it this past March, we're hoping to provide it to them. We're actually working to provide it for them in the fall. We have a whole system worked out for that, trying to trying to give them that option. Of course, some schools have gone optional, test optional in that timeframe. And then lastly, we're also trying to promote sensible assessment practices, you know, that that really focus on that small-grain, classroom-based assessment that's aligned to the standards and that can actually help teachers. So we're and we're continuing to think, but I just wanted to think creatively, but I just wanted to at least lay out kind of where our thinking is at this point, because not doing a test in one year really has a lot of downstream implications for for longitudinal systems. So with that, I'll stop sharing my screen and 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 pause to to take take questions and engage in a discussion.
Thanks, Ajit. Any questions?
I don't know that I have a question. You know how I work, Eric. Sometimes I just start talking and a question comes out. But I did want to I did want to thank you, Ajit, for for going through and re-grounding all of us too in the accountability system. And and it is really, it it's disheartening, right? We all want to have answers about what we're gonna walk into in the fall. And the reality is that we just don't, right? And and I think the last point that you left off with is is, I don't know, maybe maybe that'll be the the thing that we're all just gonna have to have to be comfortable with in terms of what teachers find with those students when when they walk back in, when they show up on a Zoom, you know, assessment or conversation in the fall. You know, that's my biggest concern is just how do we get a good handle? And and teachers, I would think, are gonna be, they're, of course, gonna be on that front line of figuring out, right, how either how much was lost or where do they need to pick up from in order to be able to be successful with students? And, you know, you know, my love of data, and Estella shares it, I know. So having a gap is painful. But it is what it is, and we'll figure it out. And so no question, just appreciation for for the complexities that we're all going through and and just the willingness to struggle through it with you.
I did again.
I do want to respond to one point.
Okay, please.
If 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 I might just just, even though you didn't ask a question, I do want to volunteer some information, if you will, which is that, you know, in addition to sort of focusing on assessment that's close to the classroom, that's actually helpful for the teacher to do something with the students who they have, we're also making the the point that for students who are returning to Connecticut Public School, we actually know a lot about them, even though we don't have one year of testing. For a fourth grader or fifth grader, for example, we have four years, if they've been in Connecticut Public Schools, we know we have four or five years of attendance data. We have, we know which schools they have moved through. We have mobility information. If they have taken a smarter balance than prior years, we have that information. If they took the kindergarten inventory, if it's a younger student and was administered that kindergarten entrance rating, we have some of that information. We also have and and districts have a lot of other assessment information that they might have administered in the early reading assessments in the early grades. So the what the point we're trying to make is that we're not, for students who are brand-new to Connecticut, of course, we may need to have some kind of screening, some kind of tool, but for students who are returning, we actually have a lot. And we're trying to remind our folks that, you know, we don't need to administer large-scale assessments, because those can only tell you so much. What is needed is really actionable information for classroom teachers.
I did again. Thank you. And I I also have a comment. My my comment has to do with if there are proxies that you can use to sort of not necessarily do the formal accountability, but sort of give us a sense of where things are. And one of the the questions is, we've heard that there are many students or some students that disappear, that never took online. Do you have that information, for example? Would that be something that you'll be sharing with us? Because to me, that's a very critical indicator or proxy, or whatever you want to call it, in looking at the landscape and what which districts had more students disappearing. I know suspensions this year will not happen, because, you know, nobody was suspended. Thank God, you know. But also in terms of completing, we're finals given, you know, in in classes. What what sort of assignments in the in the level of depth and all that? Were the assignments higher level, you know, demand that required whatever? Again, I'm I'm looking at, I want to know what sort of learning took place and how many students participating in the learning. Although, like you said, that's not the type of accountability we usually use, but I still, it gives me comfort to understand that, if it's available. Thank you.
I think that makes perfect sense, Estella. I think accountability in this timeframe is not about testing and academic accountability. It's about provision of equitable opportunities for all students accountability. So yes, we did do a survey, which asked for the extent of student participation in distance learning during this time, as well as barriers that students may have faced relative to not having a device, meaning that they had to share a device with someone in the house. Maybe there were two other kids in school, and they had to take turns, like when they sat at the computer or shared a device. And also the connectivity, like, did you have broadband? What was the barrier? So we have those data, and we're sort of finishing up a report. And I'll just give you the high, the high level was that about 74% of our students, districts reported, this is an estimate, districts reported that 74% of our students actually participated fully in distance learning. But the flip of it is the among the opportunity districts, those 10 districts, and and really even among our four largest cities, that was not necessarily the case. So those types of data are being finalized. And and we have shared those data with the governor's office as well, because they are coordinating that rapid connectivity deployment group, which is looking to solve those connectivity issues before we come back in the fall. You know the 60,000 laptops that are being distributed to alliance districts and beyond. But I know that SDE, along with the governor's office, is advocating and and reaching out to for more support, for more devices, not necessarily to get every the state one-to-one, because one-to-one means that it's a school-issued device. Many kids don't need a device from the school. They have a device, or their family has been able to procure a device. But for those for whom it's a barrier, the school should be able to provide one. So that's the gap that we're trying to fill. And we are working very actively towards that. And so that data are being finalized, Estella, and will be released. And I agree with you. I think that is what accountability should be about, like, right now and and really in the early fall.
Yeah, and 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 Ajit, you mentioned if accountability means means access. So you said 74%, so there's 26% remaining. So we want 100% accessibility for technology, right? Now, the other concern that I have, and I want Now, the other concern that I have, and I want, I want just food for thought, is the following. Okay, so now they were not tested, students were not tested this year, right? And next year, this is gonna be an option, okay? Uh, and I'm looking at this, at, you know, I tend to, I tend to be a visionary. I look long-term. Um, does that mean, um, and you know, I don't have the answers, that we're setting up more kids for failure? Because if, if testing is another option, they may not choose to test again, especially for the SATs in prep for college. So, I mean, yes, please tell me more.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Just to clarify, uh, the state assessment is not an option. It's a required assessment for all students in grades three through eight and eleven. The fall SAT that we're doing uh is an option in the sense that the student didn't have, didn't take it in, in um, uh, in the spring. And when we come in the, in the fall, we're not, we're not forcing students to take the SAT. We're gonna make it available to them and we do, because it is a state-provided uh no-cost assessment to them. And districts will provide it either in, during the school day or in the, or in the weekend. Uh, but this won't be an accountability assessment, meaning like we won't actually hold schools accountable for how students do on this, on this test. Come next spring, twenty-one, we're, again, keeping fingers uh crossed. Come next spring, hopefully we're back. Uh, there's some semblance of normalcy and that we are able to really go back to administering our state assessments. So it's not optional at that point. It's just that this fall administration for last year's juniors is uh, we're, we're saying that it's not an accountability assessment. It's available to them at no cost. Uh, but we won't, like, make a report card out of it and hold schools accountable.
Thank you, thank you for the clarity, because I don't wanna set the kids up for failure. You know, it's a disservice when they, um. And then the other thing is, um, is, are you, is there accountability when they enter post-secondary higher education? That in terms of, um, I know now, you know, you can't go into social securities, but students have IDs now, you know. So are, are, are you keeping track of, um, of students that graduate from, from community colleges or four-year institutions?
Uh, yes, we do. Um, we know for, what I showed you was the formal school accountability that we're implementing. So we're holding our K-12 schools and districts accountable for entrance to post-secondary. But in terms of knowing what happens to those students, absolutely. We know how many of them go on and graduate from college, uh, six years out. We have those data that we have actually shared back with the school districts as well. And those reports are available publicly as well. And as, I think a few months back, we came to, when the board was meeting personally, we came to the board and talked about remediation rates as well in, uh, in our state uh universities and community college system. Uh, that's happened, that's another way that we're keeping track of what's happening to our students after they leave us.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Awilda. Martha, you have anything? Malia? Malia?
I'll let Martha, if you do.
Oh, um, I appreciate the update. I think, you know, we're all, we're all for wishful thinking, but for me, my biggest worry is what long-distance, long-term distance learning is going to do. And at one point, I give the Department of Education so much credit for the hard work you've been doing. So I know you guys were gonna be on top of it. At some point, you may, if you're gonna have to cut over and start examining what you're doing to further calibrate, how students are doing with distance learning, to further calibrate the efforts, if this is gonna go on for a whole school year or two years, or who knows what we're in for. So I hope I'm wrong, but that's, that's my comment.
Thanks, Martha.
I mean, I, 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 yeah, boy, I, I don't know how to, how to respond to that. I hope that is not the case. I have two uh high school freshmen at home and I, I can tell you, being uh full-time distance learning is not ideal.
Sorry.
On, on a whole array of fronts.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I wanted to, uh, I just wanted to actually build on um, on something that Awilda was asking about in terms of accountability, you know, more than just um post-secondary entry, but then success through post-secondary. So I just would put a plug in that if there's an evolution to our accountability system, if there are um opportunities to, to add in indicators uh that, that help us to monitor progress through, throughout, um, put a little bit more on the, on the hook for our high schools.
Thanks, Malia. Um, any other questions, thoughts, com- comments? It is three fifty-two. I know we had slotted uh two thirty to four o'clock and I, I wanna be um disciplined and compliant to that. Anything else?
I, I will just say, Eric, if that's okay.
Sure.
I, I'm looking forward, uh, Ajit, to the report that you were talking about in terms of what you're, what you do have data for um, in terms of the percentage of students that actually engaged with the online learning, what that looks like across, um, you know, populations, whether it's high-needs populations across race, ethnicity. Um, you know, name all the different desegregations. I'd really like to, to see all of that. I saw your, your face change a little bit when I said.
Yeah, it's just that it's not a, it's not a student-level collection. What we, we didn't do a student-level collection because that's just, that's just a huge undertaking. We may have to go down that path in the fall. Uh, but what we collected now was district-level sort of high-level estimates. So we have data by district, but we don't have, like, student-level data to be able to break out race and ethnicity and so on, so, or other subgroups. But we do know, uh, we do know uh at a district level what the, what the, uh, what the issues are. And uh, if you look at some of the uh summaries of comments that we did, because we got a ton of comments from districts, uh, it, it shouldn't surprise us in terms of where the areas of, of uh challenge are. Uh, administering uh speech, uh, speech therapy in a virtual setting or things like that. It's just not ideal. So I think you see the areas that, that are uh challenging, even though we don't have sort of data to break it out into groups and, and quantitative data. We have qualitative data that speaks to where our challenges are within uh, within districts that may be experiencing difficulties. Hence my expression.
I'm debating beating the same drum or just letting it be. I think I'll let it be for the moment.
Um, you know, my, my thing is, you know, when I saw turnaround, the turnaround efforts were gonna be backed up to twenty twenty-two, I believe you said. That's, I said, man, that, you know, although in my mind, I was thinking, you know, what, what would be going on um, in terms of compliance to accountability index. But to, to see that, um, you know, those schools that really need the most help and, and those resources. I mean, that, that's tough, but you know, as long as we're doing the best we can by, by the kids, uh, you know, which I know we are, uh, you know, that gives me solace.
We still, just to clarify, we still have existing schools who are identified as turnaround schools. They will continue to receive uh the support. It's just that we won't have a fresh, new
Yeah.
identification um to, uh, to do that. That's what gets shifted back. It would have happened in fall of twenty-one. It gets shifted back to fall of twenty-two.
Understood.
Yeah, and a, and a, and a year from now, and it, I'm sorry, Ajit, in a year from now, um, we're able to see back to what Malia's saying, how has all this impacted, especially the high-needy populations? The pockets of folks who did not have access to technology, who are, who are sharing rooms, who are sharing laptops, you know, who their Wi-Fi goes down. Um, it's because I deal with this every day, you know, with, with my first-generation low-income population, especially with those Hs, the ones you, you identify as at this age. So, but Ajit, thank you because I'm happy that I'm in this committee. I really appreciate it. Your, your presentation was awesome.
Yeah. It was great. Ajit, Irene, Dr. Lavis, and, and team, thank you so much. Uh, we are at our time. I know our next meeting is what, in September, correct?
Yes, uh, that's what I wanted to just check in. It's, it's, we usually met in the mornings. Uh, I don't know if, what, what's preferred time and who knows what September, where we'll be in September.
Yeah.
But September, it's September fourteenth. It's Monday, September fourteenth, nine-thirty to eleven in the morning is what we have.
Well, I, I like that better than two-thirty in the afternoon. Oh. I'll be honest with you. Nine-thirty is good for me, but I, I will defer to, to my colleagues, of course. That means Estella. You are mute.
Yeah, I know. One of the prerogative of the chair of the committee is you pick the date and time.
Okay, all right. So yeah, let's, let's go with that unless there's a conflict that, that we have to switch.
So look for a meeting invite after this one to hold that date.
Fantastic. Thank you all for your time. Um, it's Monday. Have a powerful week, you guys.
Bye.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Bye.
See you guys later.